Welcome to the March 31st, 2022 Palmer City School Board District of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Ms. Bratz.
Present.
Ms. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Rudolph.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that we, the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, sir. Do we have, we have a Palmer problem, Dr. Smiley?
We do, and we are very proud this evening to have our Normandy hockey team with us. We're very impressed by the actual accomplishments they had on the ice this year, and we felt that we should take the time to formally recognize them, and we're so glad that so many of them are in attendance. Just want to read a brief summary. They won the Baron Cup. This was in mid-February. They're the first school to accomplish this in our district since 1999. They also won their Blue North Division, and that was the first time that Normandy has won the conference since 2003, 2004. They're led by Coach Jim Jackson, who has done just an outstanding job with our Normandy hockey team. So if we can give a round of applause for all of our Normandy hockey players. I also want to say that your accomplishment was so momentous that it caused us to again start recognizing students at board meetings. It's been a while because of COVID that we really haven't been doing this, so it was the occasion of you having such a significant accomplishment on the ice and said, you know, we need to make sure we're celebrating because we know we have many students and athletes and, student athletes, I should say, and coaches and supporting staff doing so many great things. So we're really happy that you're in attendance with us tonight. And we will call names if Mrs. Barkowski is almost ready, okay? When I call your name, if you can just come up, and we'll stay up here and then get a group picture.
While he's doing that, Coach Jackson, would you like to come forward with your coaching staff, please? Yeah, the whole staff. Come on. Bernie, that's okay, come on.
My son-in-law, please.
It's not being assaulted here, come on. Okay, so I want to tell you something. When I was teaching and coaching at Normandy High School, Coach Jackson had been there, I think, for 10 years prior to me showing up, way back then.
Been a while.
Been a while. He's been there a long time, and Bernie was right there with him.
One year less.
It's good to see him, one year less. Yeah, so I've known these two gentlemen for quite some time, and they do a fabulous, fabulous job, excuse me, of coaching hockey and these young men. So congratulations.
Jacob Zerjero. Vincent Filippelli. Dane Gogus. Matthew Glucka. Logan George. Melissa Green. Kyle Herschel. Lyle Hill. Daniel Horn Bartek. Dincendo Ecorbia. Christopher Noab. Joshua Price. Jude Price. Deffrey Sessia. Mario Tyler Larry. Samuel Wade. And Zachary Wade. Congratulations, gentlemen. Good job. Bernie, good job as usual.
Gentlemen, before you have a seat, I would like you to look around the audience and find your parents or anybody else that drove you to practice or washed those stinky uniforms or drove around with the smell of your hockey gear in their car for weeks on end, because I'm a hockey mom and I know that dedication. So give them a round of applause and make sure you thank them for all they've done.
Also, parents, we always like to say that this is the socially appropriate time to leave. You're more than welcome to stay.
Bye, guys.
Seeing none, we will continue.
Just a wee bit.
Thank you, and to the board, we will continue to do this. It really has kind of caught fire. We did send a form out for folks to have nominations for different groups or academic accomplishments. Obviously, athletics was one tonight, but we do look forward to recognizing a variety of students and staff members through this forum as we go forward. So thank you for your indulgence this evening.
I'm looking forward to seeing a group of little gentlemen wearing ties.
Yes, yes, from Palmer Park, absolutely.
There you go.
We also have a presentation this evening from Mrs. Stropko and friends. This is on the physical education curriculum that we are asking you to adopt this evening. So we will turn it over to Mrs. Stropko.
I appreciate the handout so we don't have to turn our backs to you as you're...
Thank you so much.
...one-looking. There's worksheets. You know I like worksheets.
Thank you, Dr. Smiley. We are on rotation to adopt a curriculum resource for our physical education program, K through 12. And this comes out of our ESER funds, so 20% of our ESER allocation has been geared towards our arts, and PE falls under that. So I'm going to take you through this, because just like music, it's a little different type of adoption because we use equipment. We use our standards to guide our instructions, and we're adopting a resource in which our teachers will use with their curriculum mapping and their assessments. So in front of you, you have the packet of the PowerPoint. I also want to point out a couple resources I printed out for you, and this is a middle school example. So this is a K-12 adoption, but I shared the middle school example because it's right in the middle. But this is really how our online platform looks like. So this first page, this is actual basketball unit. On the left-hand side, you will see all of the links that our teachers would see in terms of the unit resources. This includes assessments. And then over here is just a quicker way to get to it. So you're looking at this document. So it has our unit assessments, our unit planning, student activity cards. We're going to talk about the bundles of equipment, because part of our curriculum adoptions have always been to provide our students with the same experiences at every school. So part of this was doing some inventory of some very old equipment in our PE department, looking at what we had, looking at what our standards say our kids should be doing. Our kids actually take assessments from the state of Ohio, once at the elementary level, and then again at middle into high school. And so the old concept of PE is no longer so. Like, we need to follow standards, there is a wellness component, and quite frankly, our PE teachers should have resources, like our core teachers. So that is what you have. The second page is just an example of a self-assessment, and I like to use my own kids as an example. My Jamie, my 12-year-old, does not know how to play sports. So for him, if he was in a PE class, and he'll probably kill me if he watches this, his volleyball skills are probably not the best. So he would benefit from something like this self-assessment, to understand the game, to understand the skills, to self-assess where he's at. And so this is the type of resources that we have. So our kids get to understand the game, they get to understand the skills, which is directly linked to our standards. This is also how our teachers are evaluated. Our teachers have to, what we call, highly qualified student data per the state of Ohio, and they have to look at data trends, see how kids are doing, and how they are evaluated is how they adjust instruction. So just like our core teachers, our arts teachers, such as PE teachers, need this resource as well. All of our adoptions align with our district goals. You know what they are: achievement, transparency throughout our communities, and fiscal responsibilities. Here is our process. So we always adopt a resource, and then we bring our teachers in in terms of writing curriculum and assessments. This adoption, should you adopt, will provide professional development opportunities for our teachers to vertically align our PE program throughout our district, elementary, middle, and high, and then partnerships, which is really exciting, with universities for PD and continued education for educators. That is something that is unique with our arts curriculum that you saw last year when we adopted our flex curriculum, K through 12, for our art program. Again, our ESER funds, I shared this when we adopted our music, allowable expense. This is to expand our arts program and to give our kids all the same benefits at every building, no matter where they live in our district. Here's our standards. We follow national, we follow state standards. So you have a document of our ODE standards, and our resources directly align. The Spark curriculum is also on our ODE vendor list, which, if you remember, all of our adoptions follow that same process. I know it's small on your document, but it's also up there. I was trying to save paper.
You gave us bigger slides, though, than Charlie normally does, so you're winning.
I tried to save paper. So I talked a little bit about this already. Why do we need curriculum updated? We do not currently have resources in place. We have an outline of what our teachers teach, but we're lacking the resource part. And to fully have, you know, an encompassing curriculum, you need the resources. Our equipment needs, based off a current inventory, all of our PE teachers did an inventory. We got rid of stuff that was not safe, that was not being used, and we looked at cost-effective ways, which my administrative specialist, Ms. Chrissy Krucek, will go through. And then we also have an adaptive PE curriculum. So the last page that I gave you is the component of Spark that helps with our students that may have a disability. This is just an example of resources for our teachers in which they would work with students that may have autism. And we also, on our IEP, oftentimes have a specially designed instruction for adaptive PE. We are missing this resource in our district, so it's so important that we have it. We've had limited funding in past years to dedicate to this department and, again, equal physical education access for all students. And Chrissy's going to review our timeline and the components of our curriculum.
Okay, we began this process in December with an initial meeting and sample exploration based on our Department and Cluster Chairs' recommendations. In mid-January, we were given virtual access to several different resources for the teachers to use in their classroom, to sample, to see what they thought about it. Then, based on their check-in meetings in late January, we had vendor presentations for all K-12 PE teachers. In February and March, they completed surveys based on those presentations and also completed their PE equipment inventory. Based on the survey results and the equipment inventory, that leads us tonight to recommending our adoption of K-12 Spark PE curriculum. So what is contained in the Spark K-12 PE curriculum? In elementary, you have a teacher's manual with 10 units and daily lesson plans. In middle and high school, there's 15 units with daily lesson plans. We have a six-year digital license on top of our print curriculum. There's over 400 corresponding activities. There are videos for each skill and each lesson, so the students can visually see what they are being asked to do. There are skill and station cards and a Spark folio that the teachers have as components in which students can rotate through stations and do different games and activities to practice those skills that they're being asked to do. There's also assessments tied to state and national standards. Spark offers equipment bundles with their equipment packages and curriculum. However, these equipment packages are extremely expensive. When asked to price how much it would cost for all Palmer schools to have these equipment bundles, it was $279,000 for the equipment alone. Based on that, we dug deeper and knew we could do better and be more fiscally responsible while still getting the teachers what they needed. The teachers completed their PE equipment inventory, reading everything from poor to excellent, based on the condition that it's in. And then we ordered by building, based on those equipment inventories. Items were purchased for team sports, fitness, water safety and lifeguarding, adaptive PE, rec sports. So our equipment that we are ordering is spread out amongst all classes, so every student who is taking a PE class in the district will have access to the new curriculum and the new equipment. Based on those inventories and the ordering, these are the total costs of the program that we are recommending to you tonight. So the Spark printed curriculum and six-year license is $28,000. The in-person training for all teachers, each teacher will receive three hours of in-person training, is $10,000, and the total equipment is under $75,000. So based on the teachers completing their inventory and ordering specifically what they need to fill those gaps, we were able to save $200,000 versus ordering the equipment bundles.
And all of our department chairs were part of the committee, like in past curriculum committees. We also had access to the vendor presentation for all of our PE teachers in the district. This is just to go through our goals, improve student achievement, it's aligned to state and national standards. The biggest component, just like our music, just like our art, is providing equal opportunity, equal access to materials, to equipment, and resources. I am so impressed with our teachers. They took the time to do the inventory. On a surface level, it's real easy to just purchase a bundle and just say, you know what, we're getting new curriculum, let's get rid of the old. But we took a lot of time to inventory so we could be fiscally responsible and not just write a check because it's the easier thing to do. So they worked really hard on that inventory. And on the plus side, we know exactly what each building has. It, you know, it provides us opportunities for when we do some sharing of middle school materials that may be used at the elementary. And again, it's brand-new for our kids, having the best resources possible for their learning environment. And lastly, this was all pre-allocated using ESER funds. We always put all of our departments on a rotation. This is year three with me. This adoption, and then we have two more, will complete our entire district with updated resources that is in the last six years. So I'm really proud of this process, and I also think the price that we're spending for the resources and equipment that we're getting is very well in terms of money spent for our kids. So at this time, I will open it up to questions, comments, or concerns.
Well, I, for one, being a little older with Fizzad, I kind of feel cheated. They got all this nice stuff, and, you know, in my day, it was war ball or dodgeball, as you might call it, it was war ball or battle ball, and it was never a better learning experience than getting hit in the face with one of those red playground balls. This man, I tell you, you learn really fast if you put your head on a swivel so you don't get hit in the face from blindside. That was a life lesson there. And our coaches, our gym teachers, seem to have a great fondness of that happening. So now, you know, the other thing to do basic sports, play football and volleyball and baseball, depending on the seasons. And that's what we did, and it was crazy. That's what I remember. So I feel like I'm being cheated a little bit here, but I'm glad. I really don't have any questions, I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, thank you.
I could not be happier with this inclusive PE piece. To have solutions for staff that might not have previously interacted with a student with disabilities is absolutely wonderful. And not just, you know, one, there's so many from how to make them more comfortable and how to handle a situation. I just, everything about this is wonderful. I can't imagine being a gym teacher and not having a curriculum. I can't even figure out, like, you know, how to help my kids, teach my kids how to play volleyball. So like, this is wonderful, because I couldn't imagine having zero resources and trying to teach 30 kids how to play a sport and actually pick up some skills. So I'm grateful that this is happening and appreciate all your hard work on it. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to say, great job. Very good. This is a needed program. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. This is great. These teachers need curriculum guidance, just the same way other teachers need it, you know? And the kids in their classroom will benefit from this. I certainly appreciate the cost-effectiveness of what you've done, inventorying what we have, and making sure that the costs of what we order are what we need. And so that's really great. And this is spectacular. This is wonderful. These are concrete examples of challenges that students with disabilities may have, and what a great resource for teachers. I hope something like this is available even to regular classroom teachers, you know? I think a lot of it would be very valuable information in how to best serve students that have disabilities. So this is great. Hooray. Good job.
Just a quick question. On the slide where it had the offer PE equipment bundles, there's an X over the middle school. Does that mean we're not getting anything from middle school?
No, it means that we were able to, their inventory was solid, so we only had to purchase a few things.
Okay.
And we went through different vendors to get a cheaper price.
Okay.
Good question.
I didn't catch this, Spark, I didn't read it. So that'd be awesome, as Cindy said, to put it in a regular classroom, because I know we have a lot of inclusive classes, and I did that for a long time. Something like this for a regular teacher would be outstanding. So if you make that happen, right?
I would just like to thank both of you again and really echo the statistic you provided at the end. I think we have two more adoptions, is what you said?
Yeah.
And everything will be updated, and I think it's been literally a generation since we've been in that kind of shape, and that's because of the work that you have led. So thank you very much.
Well, it's our teachers. I mean, they are phenomenal, and you give them a process and their voices are heard. We couldn't do this without the work and the collaboration with our teachers, so...
That was my second piece. I was going to say, I'm very impressed that they took the time to do the inventory, because you're right, it's very easy to say, we need new everything, and it would have resulted in money being spent that didn't have to be, so thank you. If any of our PE teachers are watching, we appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much. Good job.
Anything else?
No, the only other piece I'd like to just offer some comment on, you know, there's a very significant agenda item with the master plan that we need to submit to the state, and I just want to thank the board for letting our senior leadership team really lead the process that I think was very thorough, very informative, very educational. Our goal really was to educate, then plan, then inspire. We were thrown a curveball during the process because we lost approximately three weeks, so we had to really speed everything up. I'm very grateful to the community members who spent literally hours digesting a lot of information, trying to give us as educated of an opinion as possible. A lot of our staff participated in that process as well, and very grateful for the time that they invested. I'd also like to say that clearly, when you are trying to condense or consolidate a building of 15, a district of 15 schools, into, you know, seven at the most, eight at the most, based on the plans we were looking at, it's a very emotional process, and during an emotional process, you always sort of fall back on trying to be a healthy organization. I think our biggest fear was that, you know, we would come out with folks that didn't like the direction things went, or disagreed with decisions, or felt, you know, cheated in some way. And I think that we continue to engage in conversations, and I think that at the very least, we emerge still a healthy organization, and I think that's extremely important. And then finally, I want the public to understand that while we submit a master plan this evening, that is not the submission of a "we're on the ballot in November." Those are further emotional conversations that we will have to have down the road, but we don't have to have those tonight. The deadline to be on the ballot for November isn't until August, so we can watch how economic conditions unfold, we can watch how pricing at this point would look, and what we would be talking about for, you know, an average Palmer City School District homeowner to pay. So I just want to be very clear that this is not, you know, here we go in November. This is, we believe that this is the most solid plan for the future of the footprint of the district. And again, thank you for the process, and thank you for helping us to emerge from a very emotional process, still a healthy organization.
Thank you.
That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Smiley. That brings us to Communications. Ms. Carpus?
I do not have anything right now.
Sean?
I do. So my five-year forecast, I was going to have the presentation on May 19th, which is about seven weeks away, but kind of wanted to give you a little preview of how it looks. I'm sure you know that most of our funding comes from property taxes, and even though property taxes, value of your properties went up 16%, 17%, we don't get 16%, 17% more taxes because of House Bill 920.
Could you repeat that so that he realizes?
Just because your property value went up 17% doesn't mean we get 17% more taxes. Really, we got $2.1 million from this bump, which is about 1.5% of our budget. And of course, inflation, as everyone knows, is getting close to 10%, so if we get 1.5% bump in revenue, but we get a bump of 10% in expenditures, we're losing money on this. Bus fuel has like doubled, and we're going to spend more in the last three months of this fiscal year than we did in the first nine months. Some of the things we did, we supplanted a lot of costs to the ESER funds. Planning is just taking money from the general fund and moving it to ESER. A lot of it's teacher salaries and benefits and health insurance. That's approximately about... I'm very grateful for the time that they invested. I'd also like to say that clearly, when you are trying to condense or consolidate a building of 15, a district of 15 schools into, you know, seven at the most, eight at the most, based on the plans we were looking at, it's a very emotional process. And during an emotional process, you always sort of fall back on trying to be a healthy organization. I think our biggest fear was that, you know, we would come out with folks that didn't like the direction things went, or disagreed with decisions, or felt, you know, cheated in some way. And I think that we continue to engage in conversations. And I think that at the very least, we emerge still a healthy organization. And I think that's extremely important. And then finally, I want the public to understand that while we submit a master plan this evening, that is not the submission of a, we're on the ballot in November. Those are further emotional conversations that we will have to have down the road, but we don't have to have those tonight. The deadline to be on the ballot for November isn't until August. So we can watch how economic conditions unfold. We can watch how pricing at this point would look and what we would be talking about for, you know, an average Palmer City School District homeowner to pay. So I just want to be very clear that this is not, you know, here we go in November. This is, we believe that this is the most solid plan for the future of the footprint of the district. And again, thank you for the process, and thank you for helping us to emerge from a very emotional process, still a healthy organization.
Thank you.
concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Smylek. That brings us to Communications. Mrs. Carpus?
I do not have anything right now.
Sean?
I do. So my five-year forecast, I was going to have the presentation on May 19th, which is about seven weeks away, but kind of wanted to give you a little preview of how it looks. I'm sure you know that most of our funding comes from property taxes. And even though property taxes, value of your properties went up 16%, 17%, we don't get 16%, 17% more taxes because of House Bill 920.
Could you repeat that so we realize this?
Just because your property value went up 17% doesn't mean we get 17% more taxes. Really, we got $2.1 million from this bump, which is about 1.5% of our budget. And of course, inflation, as everyone knows, is getting close to 10%. So if we get 1.5% bump in revenue, but we get a bump of 10% in expenditures, we're losing money on this. Bus fuel has like doubled. And we're going to spend more in the last three months of this fiscal year than we did in the first nine months. Some of the things we did, we supplanted a lot of costs to the Esser funds. Planning is just taking money from the general fund and moving it to Esser. A lot of it's teacher salaries and benefits and health insurance. That's approximately about $6 million a year. That's for years '22, '23, and '24. Come '25, all those costs are going back to the general fund. So this allowed us to stretch our money as much as we could. Otherwise, we would have needed a levy earlier. So we're stretching money so we don't have to go back to taxpayers earlier. We did receive $32 million in Esser funds, but we have allocations for teacher salaries plus all the different programs that we've allocated money for. My last forecast, we had minus $8.5 billion in year five. Preliminary, it's looking double digits, maybe 25, 30 million right now. So I just want to give you a preview of what it's looking like. Of course, things could change in the next seven weeks, but this is what it's looking like right now. So that's all I had.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I have, um...
You have a question?
Well, I have a remark I'd like to make, but after the PTA report.
Okay.
That's regarding that.
Have we had PTA council today? Thought I recognized you guys way back there. I bought my flowers.
This is our first time ever.
Yeah. But thank you for having us this evening. Last night, Palmer Council PTA celebrated 125 years of PTA. Although the National Founders Day is February 17th, we have held ours in March for the past several years. We always enjoy this evening as a chance for our veteran members to share and chat with our leaders of today and tomorrow. Thanks to all who attended, and thank you, Dr. Smylek, for joining us at our event last night. We were proud to present the National PTA Lifetime Award to Anette Spatino and the Ohio Achievement Award to Amy Popick. Congratulations to them, and we thank them for the continued support of PTA. We were honored to present the following awards with surprise visits to their schools. The Helping Hands Award went to Susan Rennecker. Outstanding Educator Award to Renee Zornak. Special Education Advocate to Tracy Fekner Giarelli. We look forward to celebrating them at our Spring Dinner on April 20th as thankados. RSVPs are due back to me by tomorrow if you plan on attending. Our 2022-2023 board will also be installed at the Spring Dinner. Congratulations to the incoming Palmer Council PTA officers. President Melissa Woof. First Vice President Delina Zingales. Second Vice President Alicia Farcus. Secretary Candy Graves. And Treasurer Heather Aketchy. As units work on voting in their new officers, we look forward to meeting the presidents and their boards in the weeks and the months to come. We are hosting incoming outgoing luncheon with our current and future unit presidents as well as their principals after our May meeting on May 11th. We will hold our annual incoming officers training for all new officers on Wednesday, May 25th. And lastly, our annual duranium sale is currently going on through April 14th. Order forms can be found online. Delivery will take place Saturday, May 7th, at Palmer Senior High Backlot. If you're interested in helping on delivery day, please email parmacouncilpta@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I want to say something small or short.
Ladies, last night's founders dinner was fun. Had a good time at it. The food, Mrs. Lang, was outstanding. That was very, very good, and I thank you for the invite.
Thank you. It was great seeing you there.
Wow, I thought it was spectacular. It was a wonderful evening. And having gone now to founders probably for 30 years or more, maybe, it was a wonderful night. Mrs. Aketchy was the chairperson for last night's event, and she really outdid herself with the, all of the decorations as well as the food planning and the treats especially that I know your family made. So you all did that together. But it was a wonderful evening, great to see so many past PTA presidents and founders as well as current. And so it was lovely. It was a really great evening. And it was exciting to see our own Amy Popick receive the Ohio Achievement Award. And that is for folks that have served children in schools very well in appreciation of that service. So it was a great night. Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay. This moves us to our resolution, move to adopt resolution, oh, wait, do we have an amendment?
Yes, we have two resolutions on the agenda related to the master plan, which are 2022-03-106. That's the 421 Plan. And 2022-03-106.01, which is the 42 Plan. So we would have to amend it to remove one of these issues. One of these resolutions, I should say.
So I moved to adopt resolution 2022-03-98, adoption amendments. So what do we need to do? Or do we need to...
We need to decide. We need to, yes, which one is coming off?
So I do believe that we are removing the 2022-03-106.01. That is coming off the list.
Second.
So now we have a motion and a second to, since I already made that motion, it works on. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-03-98. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
You have to say to remove.
To remove.
Resolution.
Resolution 2022-03-106.01.
That's okay.
I apologize, everybody. No question or comments? Okay, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-03-98 has been approved. This moves us to public participation. We have two people wishing to address the board on the agenda items. Mr. Vos?
Good evening. Before I speak, though, I just want to understand, did you move one, remove one of the master plan?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was really confused. We removed the 42 Plan.
The 42 Plan you removed?
Yeah, it's the resolution 2022-03-106.01. That is not on the agenda.
Okay, so I'll speak on the 421 Plan.
Correct.
Okay. Well, first of all, good evening, and thanks for listening to me. Other than my family, my relatives, and my church, there has been no institution that has contributed more to the quality of my life than this school district. I've attended excellent colleges, graduate schools. I've had the opportunity to work at excellent companies, but none of that would have been possible without the foundation that was laid in this school district between 1966 and 1980. And I'm grateful to the teachers, staff, administrators, and taxpayers for providing me those opportunities. I think I wholeheartedly support the 421 Plan. While no plan can be perfect, I believe that this plan offers many advantages. First of all, the high school is more centrally located. Secondly, it's located in one of the more populated locations in the district in terms of concentration of population. Thirdly, I believe we were told that we're going to be able to provide more programs with a one-high-school plan than a two-high-school plan. That makes sense to me. I've sat in board meetings for the past 10 years where I was told that there were five kids in a class and we couldn't offer the class. When I was here many years ago in my English class, we had 15 students in our English class. And that was when, we had three high schools then, but we were almost three times what we are now. Finally, not finally, but also, I believe that this will allow more students to populate these many activities we have. I understand that participation may be reduced, but there's also less students, significantly less students, at these high schools. And because you've wisely chosen two middle schools, you give the kids an opportunity to continue to participate in some of these sports and hone their skills while they're finding out what they're best at. And this doesn't apply just to sports. It applies to music, art, theater, the whole shebang. And then, when they get up to high school, they'll have a better idea. Finally, I don't think at all that should be underestimated, the significant improvement that will occur in terms of the cohesiveness of these cities. I firmly believe it will be a more unified area because of this. I believe it'll benefit the cities and the school district. I urge you to vote for this plan, and I will wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vos. Thank you for your kind comments. I'm glad you had a wonderful experience here in the Palmer City Schools, and we'd like to continue that and move it forward. So thank you.
And that was not at all in said church.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next one, Mr. Johns?
Michael Johns, 7401, Dogwood Lane, Palmer, Ohio. I'd like to reiterate what was just said. It's kind of funny he makes that comment because as I was sitting here answering emails, going through the vocational programs here in our school allowed me to create my own business and to survive and to prosper. And I was just answering emails on military contracts, which I would have never gotten without the education I have in the Palmer Schools. I am here to support the 421 Plan. It is something that we've worked on. But I will also tell you, waiting is a problem. I understand the financial situation. But I will tell you also, yesterday, we just got a shipment of steel. It has doubled in price in 18 months. Your cost to construct will continue to double. This isn't gasoline. This isn't diesel, which is on the speculation market. This is on actual production of produced product here in the United States. That's not speculation. Fuel and oil is a speculation market. That will go up and down forever. But your cost for construction will continue to rise because what we've done in this country, we have raised the minimum wage, we've raised the value of what we're going to pay people, that is going to significantly impact anything that we decide to do. Waiting is a problem. Even if you passed it this year, you're looking at a 30% increase in your cost to construct by the time you dig the first hole. So I hate to wait. But I also know that we're wasting somewhere in the range of $3 million a year having three high schools. It is time. We need to get to one high school. We need to get to two junior highs. And by the way, I'll bring you one fact that most of us have ignored. The reason our schools were 10 through 12, when I went to this school district, was because we had vocational schools in our system. We're one of the very few, if any, schools that do that. We did not put 9 through 12 in our school districts because of that. So when you go to one high school, if you force ninth grade in there, you overwhelm a school, your current schools. Your newer schools, yes, you can build for that. But the fact of the matter is, we are a vocational school system. We don't send our kids down to, I forget what it's called, the Valley System.
Polaris.
Polaris. We keep them here. So thank you very much for listening. You will get my support for the 421 Plan. It was something that we all worked hard on, and it is what the voters absolutely asked us to do. So thank you for listening, and I hope we can pass something like this. It's an uphill battle. You know it, I know it. Mr. Nucio made a comment about taxes. I know what I pay, okay? And my taxes are up $400 this year. So I know what my taxes are.
They all are. Everybody's taxes are up.
Right, everybody else is, correct. Everybody else is up, and it's tough on everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Thank you very much. All right.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-03-99, approval of the written record of proceedings from March 10th, 2022, regular, March 17th, 2022, and March 23rd, 2022, special board of education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-03-99. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution 2022-03-99 has been approved. This takes us to unfinished business. Mrs. Carpus?
Yes, we are, we have unfinished business for the first reading of the following policy. We are not going to do the first reading because it is ready. However, it has to go back to committee for review one more time, so we need to do that. And we did not have a committee meeting this past month. So Mr. Hoon has everything ready to go, and after the next committee meeting, we should see it on for a first reading.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Supreme says the curriculum. Mrs. Bratz?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt resolution 2022-03-100, authorizing agreement for Power School software.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for resolution 2022-03-100. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-100 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-03-101, authorizing agreement for Power School enrollment registration software.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-03-101. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-101 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-03-102, approval for foreign exchange student from Germany to attend Normandy High School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 2022-03-102. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-102 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-03-103, approval of K-12 physical education adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-03-103. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-103 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-03-104, authorizing purchase of Apple iPads, Apple pencils, and Procreate app.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-03-104. Any questions or comments from the board?
Dr. Smylek, can you just say a few, like, why we're getting these ones?
Yeah, this is just, this is a routine update. This is, this is for, is this for PBLA?
No, it's to extend our multimedia programming in the arts. So we got the classroom set at every high school, so now we'll have that.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call, Mr. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2022-03-104 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-03-105, authorizing purchase of laser engravers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-03-105. We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-105. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, excuse me, yes. Resolution 2022-03-105 has been approved. Is that it, Ms. Bratz?
I, unless there are other board members that have any comments or questions about anything this evening, that would conclude curriculum.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. Appreciate that. Uh, business, Mr. Ruda?
I'm actually gonna start.
Actually, I'm sorry, I should have penciled out. Mrs. Carpus, you're gonna please read, uh, business, please?
Yes, I am going to read. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-03-106, authorization to accept superintendent's master plan proposal.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-106. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes.
I do, too.
So, this brings me to this point. I really want to take this opportunity just to thank our administrative team, leadership team, Dr. Smilak, Mrs. Sprocco, Dr. Snyder, for your dedication and diligence while working on this building of our future plans, meetings that you attended, work sessions that you came to, presenting all this material to us. This team has spent months preparing presentations, attending all our meetings, all while trying to juggle their own family activities. In addition, I wanted to thank the community members that came to those Build Our Future meetings, who are giving up your evenings and giving up your afternoons to attend, to attend, to attend those meetings and share your views. Your attendance is very, very much appreciated. You guys have organized vast amounts of information, answered myriad of questions from each board member, interpreted community surveys, all in a clear and easy understanding manner, usually with a smile. Thank you for all of what you do for the students and the staff of the Parma City School District. So, it's always been my decision, and one of it was my decision, to run for the board, and it stemmed from the desire to help students of the district, to give, to give them the opportunity that this district gave me to pay back. So, the three expectations I follow and expect to follow all the time, there were professional expectations. One is to promote maximum opportunities for the district students. Two is to provide support and assistance to all the staff. And three is to provide, provide a fiscal, responsible, and efficient district to those people. Lastly, I'm encouraged by what we have come to, that we have come to a conclusion on a plan that will be both palatable to the public and move our district forward. Thank you.
Can I go?
Okay.
So, I, two pieces to this. First, I would like to mimic your sentiments and thank our senior leadership team and my colleagues for every ounce of energy that went into this. Um, I know I've said a few times that I didn't take much stock in the community survey, and it wasn't because I didn't take much stock in what they said, it was because it was such a quick snapshot of what people were feeling. And I've personally had hundreds of conversations with folks leading up to this moment, and I know that tonight, my vote won't reflect everything that everybody has told me, and that it won't match some of your ideas and some of your hopes and dreams for our district. But I promise you, to every homeowner or resident student staff I spoke to, that I will always remember the concerns that we discussed, and moving forward, always help mitigate any negative impact on students. So, with that, I want to read what I had actually prepared to say, was that former Mayor James Day once said, "Everything happened today has happened years ago, too." He was referencing a long cycle of strategic planning. The question before us was what we were willing to do to differentiate the efforts of this moment from those of the past. For the last 10 years, I've learned many lessons from residents, students, teachers, and elected officials. I've come to understand where the memories come from, the bonds they formed, the hardships they faced, and the dark moments of our history that have become evident and authentic roadblocks in our attempts to bring them on a journey with us. I've sat at kitchen tables with ardent supporters of our school who simply cannot afford another tax crease. I've gone toe-to-toe arguing the merits or lack thereof of our state report cards. I've heard brutally honest experiences from parents who only wanted what was best for their children, and I've heard success stories, success stories stretching back as long as the years spent in their homes. Stories of entrepreneurship, research that changed modern medicine, lawyers that went on to set precedents from protecting the rights of others. I ran my hands along a fireplace mantle built by a grandchild, listened to the purr of a rebuilt engine of a Hellcat, ate some of the most fantastic home-cooked meals I ever could have imagined. And all of these stories, all of these experiences were rooted in someone's experience in the Parma City School District. Walking in the footsteps of students who walked our halls before I was born and hearing their recollections of time they've spent here truly helped me to understand their perspective better. I began to understand the hurdles PTSD faces when it comes to our buildings. I began to understand where the veracity in their opposition is housed and why it existed to begin with. With this knowledge, the path forward became clearer with every conversation. I know what we once saw as hurdles and challenges in passing a bond issue are really walls in people's memories, locked in memory, photographs, news clippings, moments locked in memory banks of the residents of our three communities. The phrase "our memories are long" has been used to tout opposition to levies in the past, when really, it should be used to highlight the history that has brought us here today, even the darker moments we wish we could erase from time. On March 15th, 1976, the then Mayor of Parma, John Petruska, said in a letter to residents, "We believe we will grow in stature as the years progress, not just because of our size, but because of our future leadership." To my colleagues today, we are the future leadership that he wrote about, entrusting us not to simply allow what was to survive, but to build what takes, what it will take to survive. I've been told many times that politics have no place in our schools. My response used to be a long, drawn-out explanation on how legislation shapes public education, and these battles need to happen in Columbus. And while that stands true, I always made the assumption that was the political meeting folks were talking about. It wasn't. It was they referring to political ladder climbing, personal agendas, and promises made behind closed doors. Today, I want everyone to know, the people sitting up here are making decisions with none of those personal agendas or politics in mind. I can say with the utmost confidence that that type of politics has no home here. Our senior leadership team, our Board of Education, and our elected officials that comprise our communities are filled with folks leading with integrity and putting the work, and work and leading, sorry, and striving to be better and do better for those they're entrusted with serving. I hope together with my colleagues, we are ready to take the road less traveled, to look at our feet, see the perpetual can we've continued to kick down the road for years, finally pick it up and take action. I expect this road to be long and winding and force us to new heights, where we can see views of things we've never thought possible for our students before. I expect it will town, turn downhill and move faster for our comfort levels, just like the truncated OFCC timeline, and in true Parma fashion, I anticipate it having potholes. There are things we can see, places where we can see the destruction of time and things beyond our control, and we're collaborative to patch them, making the road we are traveling more leveled for all of us. I think I missed a line there, I'm sorry. So, in all of that very long, drawn-out thing, I couldn't find a better way to sum up our next move. So, to borrow some phrasing from former Parma Mayor Gerald Empolt, "Celebrate your part in PTSD's past, but most importantly, I want us all to look forward to our part in its future." I know that was long, I'm sorry.
It was lengthy.
Sorry. I had a lot to say, and I needed to.
No, you didn't. That's absolutely fine. I'm just commenting it was lengthy, absolutely. Anybody else? Jack?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. We had a gentleman speak about the Parma school system tonight, how it, how it formulated his future, and I have to say the same thing about myself and my personal experience in the Parma school system, and my children's personal experience in the Parma school system. They got their start, I got my start at the same place, and the foundation of my life started in this building right here. I want to thank all those people that did respond to the community survey. I personally interviewed many, many people, talked to people, they're probably glad this is over, so they don't have to listen to me talk anymore. All the sleepless nights I've had over this, but I've stayed consistent on, on the 4-2-1 plan. But mostly, I really want to thank the administrative staff for all the fabulous work they put in there. I really believe in you guys, and I hope you know that. You've done a great job, as far as I'm concerned. I believe in what you say. I truly am glad that you said it, and I support you on it, and I thank you. That's the main thing. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jim. Mark? Do you, yes, you know that, okay. Mark, Mark, you have a little issue there. Seven, twelve speaking.
Sure. First of all, another huge thank you to the administration for all the work that you put into this. I don't know how you did so much in the amount of time that you did it. It's been an outstanding effort. You've provided us with countless paperwork and so much information. It's been really a wonderful process. Thank you to the community, especially those members of the community that attended meetings on a monthly basis to provide, learn about the schools, learn about this process, and then provide their feedback to us. It's been outstanding. And then the many other community members. I know I have also spoken with hundreds of people about this whole process and tried to get information and feedback in return to make sure that as many people have been listened to as possible. Unfortunately, there are so many really minute details that, that a lot of folks don't have all the information on, and so it makes it kind of difficult, and I will, for, you know, everybody to be able to weigh in with all of the knowledge that the five of us have, as well as the school personnel. I will tell you that I've been deeply conflicted about this, and I've said before at work sessions, that whatever decision we land on, whatever plan is determined by the Board of Education, will be an improvement. We will benefit financially and economically by a move to fewer schools, and our students will benefit in many ways as well. So, whichever wound up being the choice, I've had also kind of a leading mantra from the very beginning of the process, that I was coming to this with an open slate. I was forgetting about what we had done in the past, and how we had, had other issues on the ballot, and any, anything that I could think that could sway me, I was, and I think that I've done that. I've tried really hard to keep that in mind, and I've also tried to keep in mind, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, because both plans have positives, both plans have negatives. I mean, we can't have a perfect plan. We, we have what we have in terms of the district, where our land is, where our opportunities are. We are a three-community district, so those are important considerations as well. And there's just been a great deal to think about and to consider, and I've had a hard time getting there. I've said many times, I've gone to bed sleeping or thinking about it, wake up thinking about it, and sometimes dreamt about it in between. So, it has been on my mind a lot, as I know it's been on the mind of everyone here. So, it's been an exciting process, but a very challenging process. And I, whatever, whatever happens, wherever we go, I will absolutely support the opportunities for our children to the top degree, so that we are able to move forward in a united fashion, and hopefully educate all of the community about the great need for new schools in our district, and how much that will benefit students, not just because they're new and shiny, but because they can be designed in a way that will improve our educational services to our kids, and make that, which is our highest priority, be at a better level. So, thanks to all again for your participation. I have, I'm still conflicted, I will tell you that, because there are, there are still a lot of things. But I am going to try to move forward with the very best of the opportunities for our kids at heart.
Thank you, Cindy.
He's got some.
Yeah, I will, yeah, I'll, I'll make a quick, I did want to thank all the people from the community that took the time to fill out the responses that came to the meetings, to the staff, the parents that did all the same, to the people on the senior leadership team that put all this together for us. I really want to thank all those people for, for doing that, for taking the time to do that, because it really helped us get a better feel for, because we all had our own ideas, but it got, gave us a better feel for what the people in the community really wanted. So, I really wanted to take just a moment to say thank you to everybody that participated in it, and everyone that helped design it. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I don't want to move on, but I can't. I fell asleep. No, I'm kidding, I didn't fall asleep. So, yeah, lady workers. So, Mr. Nucio, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-106 has been approved. Mrs. Carpus, you hear?
I'm sorry.
You gotta finish up.
It's been an emotional journey, so I'm just.
Do you want me to finish business?
Yeah, you want to finish business?
Yeah.
Finish him for me.
Yeah, Mr. Ruda's not interested, or not able to. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-03-107, approving an agreement to provide the non-routine use of school buses for the summer of 2022.
Second.
There is a motion as second for Resolution 2022-03-107. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-107 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-03-108, authorizing purchase of Chromebooks.
Second.
There is a motion as second for Resolution 2022-03-108. Any questions or comments from the board?
This is just normal rotation, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? Roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-108 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-03-109, authorizing sale of obsolete Chromebooks.
Second.
There is a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-109. Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-109 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-03-110, authorizing award of bid for one 2022 Chevrolet Express 2500 cargo van for maintenance.
Second.
There is a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-110. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-03-110 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-03-111, authorizing chiller and boiler plant service agreement.
Second.
There is a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-111. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-111 has been approved.
Unless another board member has a comment or a question this evening, that will conclude business.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. Mr. Kreis, do finance.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-03-112, approval of the February 2022 financial report.
Second.
There is a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-112. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-112 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-03-113, ratification of investments.
Second.
There is a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-113. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-113 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-03-114, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
There is a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-114. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-114 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-03-115, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
There is a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-115. Any questions or comments from the board?
I, can I say something really quick?
Absolutely.
For anyone who does not know how much dedication and hard work goes into the Parma City Schools Foundation, it is remarkable, and the folks that are able to make that happen are hands down some of the best human beings I've ever met, and to see all of their hard work go directly towards kids is wonderful. That's all I got.
All right, as usual, I thank you for remembering Parma City School District and your giving. There's a very nice amounts of monetary donations there that will benefit our students, so again, thank you, and thanks for remembering us. Appreciate it.
Can I make just a quick remark, Mr. Vaughn?
Absolutely.
You'll notice that, let me see, how many are listed here? Five or six schools?
Six.
Five schools. Two, three, four, one, two, three, four schools. Four schools from, regarding the foundation donations of $1,000. We didn't, we didn't select those four schools as being the recipients. Every one of the schools in our district has received a $1,000 donation from the foundation. Those four have just come through so far, so I don't want anybody to think that they were cherry-picked for some reason. Every school in the district was receiving $1,000 from the foundation, and I'm sure they will show up in the future here, so that's, that's what that is.
I'll be sure to think.
Just, yeah, just, just so everybody knows and they don't think that we're sliding some schools over others.
And for anyone who doesn't know, Mrs. Bratz is one of those wonderful human beings from the foundation that I spoke about.
Absolutely. Mr. Kreis, is that it?
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes-
I'm sorry, Mr. Kreis, we didn't vote on that yet. Oh, we didn't vote yet.
No, we didn't.
I'm hurrying us all on here. Jeez, my apologies. Mr. Nusiel?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-115 has been approved, and I apologize, I had a check next to it, thought I was finished.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis, appreciate it. Legislation, Mrs. Carpus.
I do have a couple of things. One, and forgive me because I cannot remember if it's House Bill 580 or 480, but anyways, Rep. Loyacek had written a public letter asking for cosponsors to a bill that would directly impact school board members. And so the things that the bill would do is it would put a term limit on school board members, it would require us to run every two years, it would require us all to put a political affiliation next to our names on the ballot, meaning we would have to be on both a primary and a general election. So that's the first thing to watch. The second thing is, at OSBA Northeast Region Spring Conference, we got a legal update on the new estimated cost of the backpack bill. So if the backpack pill bill simply passed, the homeschool, students that are homeschooled and students in a private school, without any movement of a student to another location, would cost the state of Ohio $1.8 billion to subsidize a choice that was already made by families. So it's just another reason why that's not good for public education, because imagine what we could do with $1.8 billion in public education. So that's all I have for legislation, unless anybody else has something.
What else? Oh, thank you, Mrs. Carpus. Human Resources, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-03-116, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, approval of certificated non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-116. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-116 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-03-117, creation of interim facilitator of Parma Academy of Gifted enrichment, PAGE, position and adoption of job description.
Second.
There is a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-117. Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
Just takes, takes one more step toward the creation of PAGE for the 2023-24 school year, very similar to how we build ACES. We will post this upon your approval, search for the most qualified individual to lead the planning efforts next year, and then plan to open our doors wherever we decide they may be in 2023.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Nusiel?
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-117 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-03-118, confirmation of change in certificated assignments.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-118. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like the comments. I really enjoyed working with Ms. Kohut in her current role as Assistant Principal at Hillside. I find her to be extremely thorough in every aspect of her job, kid-centered as well. She also has taken on more than just, you know, her day-to-day responsibilities. She's very involved in different partners in education functions. She really is a pleasure to work with. She, at this point, has decided that her love would really be more back in the classroom, and she would like to return to the teaching ranks.
All right, yeah, I can speak from experience, and she's an excellent math teacher, so students benefit.
Yep.
Definitely. Students benefit. Anybody else? Mr. Nusiel?
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-118 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-03-119, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-119. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-119 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-03-120, approval of long-term leaves of absence in accordance with ORC 3309.41.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-120. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-03-120 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-03-121, approval of revised job description, GC3, fixed asset clerk.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-121. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, a doc, a resolution 2022-03-121 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-03-122, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2022-03-112. Any questions or comments from the board? Are you going to see these people in May, maybe?
Possibly. We always offer the opportunity, certainly it's up to them.
Okay. Just curious. I'd like to see them, they've served us well.
I always enjoy when they're here. I think Dr. Schneider does a great job of summarizing their career, and it's great to be able to put a face with a name, so.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.